Township Board of Supervisors meeting on Wednesday, November 13th, 2024 at 5:30 to order. We welcome all, especially Patent Township residents, new Patent Township residents, to the Patent Township community, a place for all. As you are able, please rise and join the board in the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and one for all.
Thank you. Announcements, are there any announcements?
No, there are not.
Okay, additions to the posted agenda, are there any additional items to be added to the posted agenda at this time?
No, there are not.
Next is public comments. Residents, taxpayers may address the board on issues of interest to the township. Comments related to a Pacific agenda should be deferred until that point in the meeting. If you are attending on Zoom, please use the raised hand feature on the Zoom application and wait for the chair to indicate it is your opportunity to speak. If you are attending in person, please approach the podium and wait for the chair to indicate it is your time to speak. Public comments are limited to five minutes per person. Are there any public comments at this time?
My name is Valerie Burnett and I live in Pat Township, a place for all, and I'm very grateful and appreciative of that.
Can you, can you hear, are they picking, picking it up because it sounds, is okay? All right, good, I'm sorry.
Oh, no worries. I just wanted to wish everybody a happy, wonderful, kindness day.
Thank you.
In keeping in line kindness, there are some tools that I've extended out and I have right here. One of them is the Thomas Jones poster, where you can see the part of people at the top, which requires effective governance, that deals with issues and provides actions and solutions for the many, versus the more bleak picture at the bottom, which is going after the money bag, which is basically disposable people, disposable planet. The other tool, lens that one can use for kindness to people and the planet would be the Doma Economic Model. And it basically, in an inner circle, where there's a social foundation, there's the old one called SHORD, for human basic needs. And then there's the outer circle, the psychological ceiling that you cannot hope to overshoot. And there are nine planetary processes that are essential for life and pride. And the sweet spot is in the middle, that's the Doma. And in the lower word, Doma model, you can see the 2015 snapshot of what things woke up. In other words, there's a lot of opportunity for improvement and kindness with the world and the planet. And with that, I wish everybody a wonderful, wonderful kindness day. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda is the proclamation, November, as National Native American Heritage Month. And Betsy, will Supervisor Whitman read the proclamation?
Yep. Patent Township, oh, sorry, the proclamation is entitled, sorry, our township, our motto is a place for all. I started, this is for Native American Heritage Month, I apologize. Whereas, Native American Heritage Month is observed by acknowledging the contributions of Native Americans long before the foundation of the United States, which we recognize as in the history of this country. And whereas, Native American Awareness Week began in 1976 and recognition was expanded by President George H.W. Bush in August of 1990, designating the month of November as National American Indian Heritage Month. And whereas, in celebration, in celebrating the traditions, cultures, and accomplishments of Native Americans, we also acknowledge our nation's history of colonialism that has inflicted discrimination, deprivation, and genocide upon Indigenous people. And whereas, we are aware of the historical importance of local and national tribes and the way Native Americans continue to enrich our heritage and add to all aspects of our society by sharing their customs and traditions. And whereas, we honor our Native people, their ancestral homes, their religion, and recognize their contributions historically, today, and in the future of our community, now therefore be it resolved that the Patent Township Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim the month of November as Native American Heritage Month, a time to celebrate the rich cultures of Indigenous people, honor their sacrifices, acknowledge the unique challenges Native Americans face historically and present, and recognize their continued significance in our community.
Thank you. And if it's all right with the board, can I get a motion to approve the proclamation proclaiming November as National Native American Heritage Month?
So moved.
Yes, second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The motion passes to proclaim November as National Native American Heritage Month. Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is recognizing Ken Soder on his retirement. And Amy, would you like to take that?
I will start, yes. Mr. Soder will be leaving us on December 6th after 25 years of service to the township. In that time, he served as our zoning officer and open space property manager and as the director of public works operations. On a personal note, Ken has been a valuable resource to me as I started my job here at the township. We joke around a lot, we don't always see eye to eye, but I do enjoy working with Ken every single day. And he will certainly be missed by myself and also by the rest of our staff.
Okay, any members from the board that would like to add to Amy's comments? Ken, I know 25 years is a long time and you're still looking like a youngster, so, all I can say is Patent Township is grateful to you. And without further ado, we have something for you from our township. And it's a plaque. It reads, "Congratulations on your retirement," presented to Ken Soder, "in sincere appreciation of your dedicated years of service at Patent Township. We hope that you enjoy your well-deserved retirement of 25 years of service." So, if you want to come on out and, the board?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ken, would you like to say a few words? Sorry to put you on the spot, son.
Yeah, could say very little. I've enjoyed working with, you know, the township staff. I've enjoyed working with a lot of the township residents. There were probably some residents that did enjoy working with me, but that's part of the job. So, I've enjoyed being here. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is the Center County Long Range Transportation Plan. And I think that is Anne?
Yep.
Ms. R. Thank you, Anne, for coming in. This is our senior...
Welcome again. Thank you for your time. I just wanted to share a couple things. As part of our metropolitan planning organization and our strategic plan, we've committed to visiting the municipalities roughly once every two years. So, we are now doing that right now for the Long Range Transportation Plan. We have 35 municipalities that we have to visit. Roughly 10 of those had first Monday meetings, which is tricky, but we hope to get all of these done by the first week of February. In addition to that, I would just wanted to share what the major responsibilities of the MBO are. And they, we keep ourselves moving. We, we have a constant schedule, it may not be obvious to everyone, but some of our priority, major responsibilities are staying up to date with the latest legislation. It could be state, it could be local, it could be federal. It's part of our job to have some awareness about what's going on in the world, if you will. We also work toward keeping our stakeholders up to date and informed. Our meeting, our technical coordination meetings are public and always available to anyone who is interested. And we also send out a meeting summary. So in case you didn't want to sit through the, through our meeting, there's a quick summary. Like I said before, we have quite a few work tasks. Eight are required. And typically speaking, in a five-year period, we have to update all of those. The Long Range Transportation Plan being one of them. Also, as part of our work effort, we have to worry about the programming of funds. Slide two.
Which one?
Back slide.
Back one?
I was talking because I thought I should just...
Yeah, I forgot about the side turn, sorry.
No, that's okay, no problem. And the, the federal programming is divided up into basically a set of four-year chunks. So, the TIP, or Transportation Improvement Program, we know that we have those dollars and we are programming them and we are going to use them, or we both use them. And then the twelve-year program is a little less clear. We think we're going to have money from year five to 12, but sometimes there's a shifting of funds. Sometimes projects go over budget in the first four years, so we have to delay other projects. So, that gets a little tricky. And then the Unified Planning Work Program is essentially staff tasks, roughly for every two years. So, that actually is our timesheet. That's what we have to do and that's what we commit to every two years. And all of this is really to work toward programming funds for roads, bridges, transit, and active transportation. So, what is the Long Range Transportation Plan? For Center County MBO, it is to include all modes. And we are finding modes are changing. So, if you don't know, in Pennsylvania, local roads, by permission of municipalities, can have ATVs. So, this is an emerging item that we are going to include. But we also have to have goals and objectives for our plan. And each time we update this plan, we revisit those to see how our goals, how our objectives have perhaps changed. There's also a concept of performance. We're looking at condition of bridge, pavement, and safety, as well as transport. And all of those are items that come from federal highway and filter down to us that we are obligated to meet in some form. It must be 20-year plan. We go a little bit beyond that, and it must be physically constrained. So, while the plan is going to have a lot of projects in it that meet that fiscal constraint, we also plan to have other aspirational projects, if you will, that we know we can't fund, but they are our wishes. So, if there's a windfall of some type of discretionary grant, perhaps we can preserve it slightly. So, a couple of the inputs that we have to do are, we have to know who our stakeholders are, so demographics. We use GIS heavily to map information, so it is readable and legible. But we also have to include things like bridge evaluation, the top 25 local bridges or state bridges that are declining. And in the next several years, by 10, 15 years, we need to see improvement. Something that has emerged and is increasing of concern is what crash, crashes the plan? What's happening in Center County? Is it distracted driving? Is it lane departures? And that has been added an area of emphasis. We also look for stakeholder input. So, tonight, I'm here to say, hey, we're looking for input. But we also have to include equity as part of our review. And PENDOT does an equity analysis for us. We can not have enough staff bandwidth to do that. There's also a federal equity analysis that we typically, in the past, have not used, but we are going to consider adding that as part of our review. And the main populations we look at are minority and low-income populations. So, all of this kind of gets put together to see where our issues are, where can we find potential projects, and how we can invest in them. Part of that is an implementation plan. We have to be able to actually try to implement it. We have to give ourselves a schedule. When we have that draft plan, we have a 30-day comment period. We'll be notified at that and see if we're on the right track before adoption. And we have to adopt it in September of 2025, otherwise we get in the middle. So, a couple things in terms of engagement. We want to have people give us information. It helps me in our federal planning factors, but it also helps identify issues and needs that, for example, as staff, I'm not driving every road in Center County, so I need old help, if you will. And then we also have to look at what the state's goals are and potential infrastructure needs that are emerging from local measures. Fiscal constraint, again, is always part of the, of the process, is always part of the picture. Unfortunately, we'd like to do all sorts of improvements, but it's just not an option for us. And then, like I had said before, we are looking at all modes of transportation. Something I didn't previously mention is emerging technology. So, one of those items is how can we look at signal timing? There's a whole group at PENDOT District Two and Central Office, that they are constantly looking at what the technology is and sharing that information with us to see, well, what can we do, what can we apply here to this? Next slide. So, really what I have are five questions for you. So, when time permits, I didn't assume we would have time tonight to do that, but when time permits, what we would really like is that we spend some time answering these five questions. And I'll just run through the headers. Key corridors, alternate transportation modes, what are your concerns? Emerging technology, what's out there that you're thinking about? Are there county and regional issues that you are hearing about, your account personally? And then land use. Are there changes in the land use pattern that are impacting the transportation mode? And are, do you potentially have ideas of what your future thoughts are for land use? That's helpful for us in terms of future planning. The last part of it is, as part of this effort, there is a project submission form. And after you answer the questions, we are asking that you consider submitting a project. And if you have an idea of what it is, safety, it's a congestion project, you have, you're able to somehow describe it, like it's, you know, on Aberton, between these two streets, we have a signal timing issue. Try to provide as much information as you can, and we'll see where that aligns in our own plan. And there's a possibility that it's not big enough for a Long Range Transportation Plan project, but it might be a more short-term type of project, which we could potentially add to the Transportation Improvement Program. So, that is all I have. That's that. And welcome to reach out to any one of us with any type of question. So, if you have any questions.
Are there any questions Supervisor Abrams? I'll see you first.
The Senator Ferris' manager, I just became aware of the work of a group that is, I guess, trying to reimagine 322. It seemed like a rather late entry into the discussion of that, although they've been working on their ideas for some time. I just wondered where that all fits in with what's being planned.
So, you're talking about the State College Area Connector. And PENDOT, the MBO, appropriate municipal staff have been made aware of the reimagine of 322. It is an initiative by Dr. Marriott, who is a Penn State professor. And they have had students, I think, the last three semesters, work toward having conversations, developing potential solutions to suggest to PENDOT and the team that is developing the concepts for the State College Area Connector. So, I do believe they are, they are being heard as a student, as a set of student projects. What that looks like in terms of implementation, we're nowhere close to design. So, stay tuned, is what I can say to that.
Supervisor Whitman?
I was just going to ask a procedural question. So, I actually went through and answered a lot of questions sort of first brush. Is that something that we give to our manager?
Yes, so...
Set aside time at future meetings?
Yeah. So, what our thought process was, the engineer and I are going to sit down, Michelle and I are going to sit down and go through the questions and also come up with some projects. And then we'll put this on your agenda, probably your second meeting in either January, January, or your first meeting in February. And then we can have a longer discussion. So, if you want to think about those questions and think about any potential projects, and then we can send back our information to Anne ahead of the March deadline.
Sounds good. Any other questions? And I just have one question since you're talking about driving, the transportation aspect of it. Have you talked to our police, since they ride it every day, our, our fire departments and our EMT? They would know some issues, roadie issues and transportation issues. Have, are there any meetings with those entities?
So, you've made it a good point. I believe EMS is in the mix for stakeholder engagement. I have not included these. So, if you have time and bandwidth, I'd be happy to sit down with you sometime and build the questions.
Chief? Yep. I hate to throw you under the bus like that, but, you know, since you ride it, I mean, our police officers ride it every day. So, they are an asset to getting that information over. Thank you, thank you, Anne.
Thank you for your time.
Mm-hmm. All right. All right. My jump on the ground. Okay. Seeing next on the agenda is the proposed 2025 township budget. And Larry Pager, Director of Finance, is up next.
Okay. So, just to do a quick review of where we are on the budget. So, last week, on November 6th, we presented the budget. And tonight, we will have a tentative adoption of the budget, I would hope. And then December 18th, we will have a public hearing and the final adoption of both the CIP and the budget. So, this budget has a 1 mil tax increase proposed for 2025. That will bring us from 9.3 mils to 10.3 mils for real estate taxes. In addition to that, there's 6 tenths of a mil for open space preservation. There is a half a percent earned income tax, $52 local services tax, and a half a percent real estate transfer tax. And the earned income tax, the LST tax, and the real estate transfer tax are all at minimum allowed by law. Or maximum allowed by law. I'm sorry. Maximum allowed by law. They're not minimum, they're maximum. The allocation of the millage, you can see last year, we had a total of 9.9. This year's total of 10.9. The difference is in the general millage going from 6.6 mils to 7.6 mils. That is the 1 mil increase. The debt remains at 1.2 mils. The open space preservation debt remains at 6 tenths of a mil. The library remains at 4 tenths of a mil. Parks capital improvements remains at 7 tenths of a mil. And fire remains at 4 tenths of a mil. The revenues, budgeted revenues are $12,947,503. The breakdown is just over $6 million in real estate taxes, $350,000 for the tax on the open space, just under $3 million for earned income tax, 1.1 million for other taxes, 1.7 million for intergovernmental payments, and 800,000 for non-tax sources. Expenditures are $13,395,667. And they break down into 1.8 million for general government services, 4.1 million for police, just under $3 million for public works, just under $2 million for engineering, planning, and zoning in parks and rec. For other community services, it's 1.3 million. For debt service, it's $788,000. And for open space debt service, it's $245,000. So, that, with the $12,947,000 in revenues and the $13,395,000 in expenditures, it gives us a decrease in our fund balance of $448,164, leaving us with a year-end cash balance of $11,190,556, which equals 8.89% of operating expenditures, which would equate to about one month of operating expenditures. The 2025 personnel cost of benefits in the budget, there's a 3.2% cost of living adjustment for the non-uniform employees. In 2024, that cost of living adjustment was 4.3. It was 6.3 in 2023 and 4% in 2022. Also included is a 1.25% merit increase for non-uniform employees, which they're eligible to receive on their anniversary date. The police contract, which was signed in late 2022, had four-year increases at 6% for 2023, 5% for 2024, and 4% for 2025 and 2026. So, this budget would include a 4% increase for the police. There's an increase in our health insurance costs of 14.8% from '24 to '25. And the employees contribute to that health insurance at a rate of 12% of the total cost for non-uniform employees and 9% of the total cost for uniform employees. And that is my review. Just a reminder that today, we would be looking to make a tentative adoption, which December 18th, we will look at a public hearing of this budget and the final adoption of the budget and the CIP. Thank you. And if there's any questions or comments, I'll accept them at this time.
Any questions at this time, Supervisor Abrams?
One question that always comes up is why we need more than $1 million as the fund balance at the beginning, at the end of the year? And the answer is the same as it has been, that we don't start getting new tax money coming in until about a quarter of the way through the new year. And so, that deficit has to be made up for by the fund balance, so we don't have to borrow money at additional cost.
That's correct. Okay. Any other questions at this time from the board? All right. Seeing none, can I get a motion to tentatively adopt the budget and set a public hearings for December 18th, 2024?
Sound good.
Second?
One of us.
All right. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes to tentatively adopt the budget and set a public hearing and adoption on December 18th, 2024. All right. Next on the agenda is 2025-2029 Capital Improvement Plan. Larry, you're still up.
Yeah. Just really quick on this. Based on the budget that we just tentatively adopted, I made changes to the capital improvement plan. I did not change any of the projects. They still exist. I made some changes to the estimates that we made in the capital improvement plan to make sure that those where I was estimating what the budget was going to look like, that they now agree with what the budget looks like. So, in that case, you can see that in here, I have included now the 2025 1 mil increase. Also included in the capital improvement plan would be, as we talked about last week, that we were looking to do a two-year plan to bring our fund balance up to a healthy level as suggested by the Government Finance Officers Association. And that would be another 1 mil in 2026, maintaining the same millage in 2027, but then dropping back those two mils in 2028. And so, we would have a hump to get us over that hump and then come back down to where we are in 2024 and 2028. So, I wanted to show that, and I wanted to show the projected year-end cash balance. This is the 8.89% that I showed in the budget. Next year, based on the projects we have in the CIP, that would drop to 7.3%, even though we would be increasing another percent. But it would go up to 15 and 22 and then 24. So, those are the changes that I made to the capital improvement plan. So, I will accept any questions or comments about that.
Any questions for Larry at this time? All right. Seeing none, thank you for the information, Larry.
You're welcome.
All right. Next on the agenda is Public Safety Monthly Report. Chief Jolly, you're up.
Hi. Thank you very much, and good evening to everyone. Copy of the October 24 Police Public Safety Report is included in your materials. You'll see that our officers conducted 204 traffic stops. We wrote 25 citations, four parking tickets. We handled 32 criminal arrests. Bike patrol was back out there, pedaled 17 miles, did 31 business checks, handled one incident, wrote a parking ticket, and did a vacation home check. Department notes, we had a really busy month with some of the different criminal activity and some of the arrests, so I actually included kind of a bonus one this month. But we had a 27-year-old male who was charged with access device fraud. That individual found a credit card laying on the ground in a township, in a parking lot in a business in the township. That male then proceeded to use that credit card at multiple different locations, including checking into a hotel room and using the card to pay for the hotel room. So, our officers were able to track that individual down and made an arrest when he was at the hotel. A 50-year-old female was charged with theft by deception and retail theft. She was in a township store selecting merchandise off the shelves, did not pay for that merchandise, but took it up and tried to return the merchandise. The store in turn gave her store credit. She went through, picked up merchandise, and then used that credit to pay for that merchandise and removed the merchandise from the store. So, she was arrested for those actions. A 37-year-old male was charged with forgery, attempted theft by deception, and attempted bad checks. That individual attempted to pass a fraudulent check that was worth over $2,000 at a bank in the township. And then that individual also forged the name of an individual who was a legitimate employee of a business from that check. And then lastly, a 52-year-old male was arrested for theft by unlawful taking. He was kind of acting suspicious in a store. Cashier had her cellphone sitting behind the cash register. She got distracted for a moment, and the individual grabbed her cellphone and fled the store. However, our officers were easily able to identify that individual as they dealt with him on previous theft offenses, so we were able to make an arrest on that as well. 15 arrests were made for retail theft and four for driving under the influence. And our officers successfully served three warrants of the six that they attempted and conducted 27 vacation home checks. Our officers did use force during one incident in the month of October. We were dispatched to report a disorderly person call at a residence in the township. When our officers got there, they found a female who did not reside at that residence and was heavily intoxicated. The residents, who initially invited the female over, did not want her there any longer, so they asked for our assistance in removing her. But due to her level on intoxication, our officers summoned EMS to come and care for her. When they arrived, the female, and we tried to move the female to the ambulance, she became physically combative, was pushing and kicking at the officers and the EMS workers. So, our officers had to physically restrain her by handcuffing her for everyone's safety. Even after handcuffs, she continued to try to kick and assault the officers and the EMS workers. So, EMS made the decision eventually to sedate her on the scene, and then she was able to be safely transported to the hospital for further treatment. There's no injuries reported by anyone at the scene, and she's facing charges of disorderly conduct and underage drinking as well. Under Community Relations, Officer Tuskovich presented his annual safety training to the Park Forest Elementary School staff. He also spoke with the 6th grade academic literacy and the 7th grade health classes at Park Forest Middle School about social media usage safely and then about the appropriate use of social media as well. Officer Barzal presented a presentation to the Center Region Fire Police for the, it was the Alpha and Bollesburg Fire Companies, on the accident reconstruction team and on the drone and the software that we have for the drone to help map serious crashes. So, they really appreciated that, and we'll talk a little bit more of that in just a second. Officer Tuskovich conducted a lockdown drill at the Central Intermediate Unit 10 at the Mather Mill School. He also attended a trunk or treat event at the Park Forest United Methodist Church. And then Officer Snyder and Graff did K-9 demonstrations at the Citizens Police Academy, WPSU Fair, and then also at Safety Fair at the Zion Community Church. Training department activities, our officers attended tactical response team training. Officer Kaufman attended a basic SWAT training. Detective Salead and Officer Barzal attended the annual crash reconstruction seminar, which is put on by the Pennsylvania State Police. Officer Kaufman attended a class on Pennsylvania's laws pertaining to search and seizure. And Officer Snyder and K-9 Graff completed their two required training days for the month. I attended the Citizens Police Academy graduation, a radio advisory committee meeting, Big Brothers Big Sisters Advisory Committee meeting, Center Region Emergency Services meeting, and Center County Police Chiefs meeting. Received a couple of nice notes from the community. The first was the event that I had said that Officer Snyder and Graff attended, WPSU Aventapalooza. They estimated about 350 guests came through that day. And I could be mistaken, is this the first year for this?
No, every year.
Okay. So, this was the first year we were invited to it, and Officer Snyder said he had a fantastic time. And it sounds like everybody appreciated having Graff there as well. So, we're looking forward to hopefully being invited back to that. It sounded like it was a great event. So, appreciate you getting us in connection. Received a nice letter from a Penn State student who came and did a ride along with Officer Sunderland, just talking about how great of an experience it was going into a career in law enforcement. Received a letter also from the fire police captain for the Alpha Fire Company. As I had mentioned, Officer Barzal did a presentation about our drone that we have in the accident reconstruction team, talking about scene safety and different things like that. And I've talked before about how lucky we are in this area for the cooperation that we have amongst law enforcement. But that also extends to our fire companies and also the EMS that we have in the area. We have a fantastic working relationship, and God bless the fire police, because they come out in direct traffic in any condition, and they'll stay there as long as we need them to. So, we really appreciate all the help that the Alpha Fire Police give to us as well. And then lastly, just a note from a community member who just wanted to thank a patrol officer who had been in their neighborhood the night of Halloween for trick or treat. I did want to give a special shout-out and kudos to Sergeant Albright, who actually adjusted his shift so that he could come in and have an extra patrol car out. So, we had three cars, making sure we could cover as many neighborhoods and make sure everybody was safe that evening. So, just really appreciate all the hard work that the officers did with that as well. This is actually just an insert from the program for the Citizens Police Academy, so I wanted to give it a plug real quick. I had the opportunity, like I said, to attend the first night of the academy and then also the graduation. But if you're not familiar with it, it's a six-week program. And really, what we're trying to do is strengthen the relationship between the police and the community through education, talking about, you know, how we do things, why we do things. I think that's the kind of more important part a lot of times for the community is why do we do things the way that we do as law enforcement, especially here in Center County? But all law enforcement in the Center Region, including Belfont and Spring Township, represented. And there's just a few photos from the class that just graduated here last month. Always get fantastic feedback. We will be doing it again in 2025, so I will try to plug it as soon as we know when the class is going to start accepting applications for it. I just think it's a fantastic opportunity to get a kind of behind-the-scenes look at law enforcement in Center County, so I wanted to include that as well. And then lastly, we just have our record list of calls for service. Our agency handled 574 calls in the month of October. That's up from the 554 that we handled in September. 140 of those were school checks, so again, you're seeing the numbers increase now because our officers are very active in the school zones and throughout the day. 47 were health and safety EMS assists. The one thing I did want to note, that I did see a little bit of a jump, and maybe you guys might have also recognized this looking through my report, we handled 63 crashes in the month of October. So, that's up quite a bit. A couple of things are contributing to that. Number one, obviously, we see very increased traffic during Penn State football games, so we do see some fender benders that happen from that. But another thing that, and right now, we actually just had one earlier today, car versus deer accidents. So, animals are, the deer population right now is very active and moving around. And a bunch of them have been car versus deer, so... a bunch of them have been car versus deer, so just be very, very cautious as you're driving, looking for deer in the roadway. So that completes my report.
Any questions for Chief? Chief, I just want to add, as the holidays are coming in, can we get some information on scammers? You know, this is the best time that they're calling, you know, around, you know, and people are actually giving these individuals their personal information, social security cards, their bank card information, and we need to just keep, just reiterating to our communities, do not give these people any information. You know, they're coming in for my senior population, which I'm in, they're actually having a senior call us as a scam. And I definitely want to keep abreast on keeping that out in the forefront.
Yeah, we do, we do have information on our website about those types of things and what to do if you happen to become a victim of one of those. Obviously, call your law enforcement right away. We're happy to help and answer any questions, and we'd rather get involved right at the beginning and maybe hopefully help recover any funding or anything like that. But yeah, I can certainly reach out to Sophie and have her push out some more information on social media and everything, so.
I appreciate that. Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is?
I have a question.
Supervisor Whitman?
Yeah, thanks, sir. Actually, a question for Ken, maybe. This has been a particularly noticeable year for large deer population, and have you noticed that too with the increased mast in this western area?
It's, they're just more active because we're in almost the very height of the breeding season for whitetail deer right now. So they're, you know, running around chasing and they're not watching where they're going.[923.61][923.61](laughing)
(inaudible). Okay.
Supervisor Whitman, that's it?
That's it. Supervisor Abrams or something?
I'm sorry, Supervisor Abrams?
No, just a reminder that if you hit a deer, it costs a lot of dough.[940.07][940.07](laughing)
Thank you.[942.07][942.07](laughing) I just lost my train of thought.[950.82][950.82](laughing) Next on the agenda is public words. We have no items, only to say thank you again, Ken. Next on the agenda is engineering, planning, and zoning. Amy, I think you want to take this?
Yeah, I'll handle the planning commission report. The planning commission met beginning of November, and they started work on the short-term rental housing regulations. We had a pretty lengthy discussion about how things could be regulated, what we want to do, what some of the concerns are around short-term rental. So that work will continue into the new year. I think we're hoping that maybe by the middle of the year, there will be an ordinance that we can present to the board for your feedback and recommendation to move on. And they also started to work on, they looked at the rezoning request that we got for Douglas Drive, the corner of Douglas and Atherton, and looking at rezoning that piece of Atherton from Galen to Douglas. And they are recommending that the board move forward with further consideration of that. We'll likely put that on your agenda next month just to have a discussion, and then because it's the holidays, we won't start with doing anything until, you know, probably that second meeting in January. So we have time to let the public know and give them an opportunity to provide some feedback.
Great. Okay. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Next on the agenda is Cricklewood Drive Bike and Pedestrian Ordinance.
So we have Carl Schellenberger here, who's going to present the plan to. We also have Susan Wheeler sitting in the audience who can answer questions as well. So I will let Carl go forward, and you have your?
Is there anything I need to show?
Yes. That one right there.
This one?
Yep.
So we're getting our catch-up there. So the Cricklewood Drive project, we have prepared preliminary plans and moving forward for design. It would be a shared use path that would extend the entire land from Top Trees to Fox Hollow. And it also involves reducing the Cricklewood Circle, that road diet, what we call it, slow down here, but also provide space for the shift and the passenger between the paddock and the roadway. We're still working on some of the gent, how we're avoiding these existing utilities and working with the area, near the area house, trying to keep as much parking onto as possible. There are forty spots right now that has designated a full of the house, and Currie's part of it, they're blocking it, trying to keep as many of those spots on the street in that area as possible. So we're working on this detail. So we also then have, this was a month ago, to discuss changes to how they affect their bus stops. There were like two bus stops there to kind of expand a little bit so that there would be more space for people waiting mainly on the, did there's two spots, one is the Cricklewood Circle, the other one is just just past the area house heading towards Fox Hollow. They're basically spots for people heading inward towards campus. So we just wanted to get an update to Supervisor on the status of the project, agenda, and just a few of the status files where we are right now. We'd like to continue the design and work forward towards, like permits and staff. We also look to, looking for funding to pay the project.
Are there any questions from the board at this time?
Alan?
Seeing none, then can I get a motion to accept the preliminary engineering design plan?
So moved.
Hold on a second.
All right, discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes to accept the preliminary engineering design plan. Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda is the Spin Bike E Program.
So I will take this, but Susan is in the audience if you have questions. So in 2021, Penn State partnered with the Borough State College in SPIN, which is a San Francisco-based micro mobility unit of tier mobility to offer the Penn State State College Borough Communities a new bike share program. On July of 2022, the Recreation Advisory Committee recommended to the board that the township enter into an agreement with SPIN to serve the areas as shown in the attached map. The board also agreed it would be the task of the RAC to study, identify, and recommend any new connectors or expansions into the township for them for their final approval. So the RAC unanimously recommends that we expand the current service area to include Graysdale, the corridor along Meeks Lane, and the existing neighborhoods in the Grayswoods Development. In addition, the RAC recommends the expansion into Top Trees West to serve the new Mount Itney Medical Offices and the westerly section of the Bellefonte Central Rail Trail. And we did include a map, and we have it up on the screen of the proposed service area. So if you're comfortable with the recommendation, you can make a motion to approve that.
Okay, are there any questions before I make a motion? Then can I get a motion to the expansion of the Spin E Bike Program to include Graysdale, the corridor along Meeks Lane, the existing neighborhoods of Grayswood, the Top Trees West area, and the Wesley section of the Bellefonte Central Rail Trail?
So moved.
All right, can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes. Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is the Patent Township Representative to the Center Region Parks and Recreation Authority. Amy?
Yes, so Ms. Solick is currently the township's rep to the CRPA. She would like to step down because of various commitments that she needs to do. The RAC discussed a replacement for her position, and due to work and time commitments, there was no one else on the committee that was able to fill in. So they're recommending that the board appoint Ms. Susan Wheeler to be our representative to the CRPA.
Okay, any questions? Supervisor Whitman?
Is Susan Wheeler okay with that?
Are you okay with that?
Is Susan Wheeler okay with that?[1378.25][1378.25](laughing)
Then can I get a motion to approve Susan Wheeler to serve as the township appointee for the Center Region Parks and Recreation Authority? All right, can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes. Congratulations, Susan.[1405.51][1405.51](laughing) All right, next on the agenda is administration, no items. Next is the consent agenda. Are there any items or items on the consent agenda that you would like to comment or remove at this time? Seeing none, can I get a motion to accept the consent agenda? All in favor say aye. Aye?
You need a motion.
Yeah.
Can I get a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved, or Elliot, so moved.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Did I hear all? The consent agenda passes. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the management report. Amy, you're up.
So just a couple of things to highlight this month. First, we are in the process of transitioning our IT services over from State College Borough to a company called Infodapt. Infodapt actually does a lot of work for municipalities across the Commonwealth. We met them through, actually PML and APMM through the last couple of years. Larry and I met with them today, and we're working on that process and hope to have the changeover done in February of this coming year. And Michelle Marrow, our consulting engineer, has submitted a grant application to PennDOT to repair and rehabilitate Viral Boulevard between North Atherton Street and Waddle Road. Total project cost is $365,000. The township would provide a $109,000 match. If the grant is awarded, construction would be scheduled for 2027. Michelle and I have had a good conversation about trying to apply for funding for the larger roads in the township through the state, because the state understands what we have and what we're working with in terms of the bigger roads and the congestion in the area. And then lastly, we're hoping, hoping that we'll be able to bring you the draft single-use plastics ordinance early in 2025. There's a working group that we've been working on this for the past couple of months. We're trying to get a meeting with the municipal managers, the rest of them, to go over what's in the draft ordinance. And also, we're going to reach out to our friends in Harris Township to see if they might want to join in with the rest of us on this. We've done a fair bit of research. Jasmine at the Borough and her team have done a lot of research on this, and we think we have pretty good regulations and want to have a good discussion with everyone about where we're trying to go in terms of the single-use plastics. So that's a coming attraction. And then one last thing, I believe you guys can go ahead and cancel your meeting next week if you don't want to have it, because I don't believe you have any agenda items that need to go on it.
Okay, can I get a motion to cancel next meeting? Well, that was quick. Second?
Hold on a second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay.[1579.13][1579.13](laughing)
Any opposed?
You're overruled.[1582.13][1582.13](laughing)
Did you get that?
I do have a question now. Oh, oh.
And I just wanted to add one thing to Amy's report, and that's the fact that tomorrow, the new traffic signal on Grayswoods Boulevard should actually start to function, so if we're hoping to be paving in that area tomorrow and Friday, if, and it doesn't look like the weather's really going to be conducive to that, so it's probably going to be Friday and Monday, but the traffic signal should be up and functional tomorrow.
Oh, thank you. That is good news. Good news, thank you.
I have a real quick question about the?
Supervisor Whitman?
Oh, sorry about that. I thought you said?
No, go ahead.
I can't see sometimes that far. The application to improve parts of the road along Viral Boulevard, what were the two intersections?
From North Atherton Street to Waddle Road.
Wow, okay. I think that's great. And what would that involve? You might have said, but?
Uh, so it's, it's an overlay. There's also some stormwater work that needs to be done in there to repair some of the issues along the roadway. That road is starting to deteriorate in places.
Gotcha. Cool, okay, thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda are committee reports. The only, on my report for public safety, we canceled our meeting. And any other comments or reports? I know there were quite a few of the committee reports that were canceled and meetings. So seeing none, next on the agenda is other business. And before we adjourn, I would just like to say congratulations to Charles Dumas, who will be receiving the lifetime achievement award on Sunday. As Charles is a former professor, actor, writer, activist, and so much more, but to all of our communities, he has been such an asset to helping everyone. So we would always like to thank individuals like Charles Dumas for all his work and for his lifetime achievement as being a friend to Patent Township and a friend to all. So congratulations, Charles, as you receive this wonderful award on Sunday. And seeing nothing else, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all. This meeting is now adjourned.